Call the meeting, the order Silver Falls School District.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Board of Directors and attendance, all are present with the exception of Derek Foxworth, and he got ahold of me and had family thing come up last minute, he couldn't be here, so he is excused. And first item is Kashana, and am I saying it right?
Well done.
Okay, Kashana, you've got the oath of office in front of you, if you would please read that.
Okay. I Kashana Knoll do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Silver Falls School District. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member according to the best of my ability during the term for which I have been appointed.
Officially, welcome to the board. I entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
We have a topic with Derek, is he gonna, are we gonna skip that topic?
No, we'll take care of it.
Okay, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Okay, first item, Bethany Charter's property and gymnasium, Brian Rose.
Did you know 6:30?
I can text him.
Yeah, that's a good question, though.
Last time we was here it was seven.
It's been a couple months. You're texting Josh?
Yeah.
Maybe we can skip him, maybe we can go to Jeff Alderman. Yeah, sorry about that. Debbie does remind everybody, so I don't know.
Well, just as we go. Jeff, I put you up here.
Wonderful.
Good evening to you.
Good evening to you. I've got a little presentation, a little slideshow. It's mostly pictures of the Silvercrest seismic rehab. Whatever you want to give.
Clicker?
Oh, clicker for you, Jeff.
Thank you so very much. I got it. Are you getting it put up, Debbie?
Daniel, Daniel will put it up.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. So, I'm gonna do a little bit of an update, but it's mostly on the seismic rehab. It was completed at the end of August. It went almost flawlessly. The first day we had one little hiccup, and from then on it was almost seamless. It came in on time and under budget, and you can't ask for better than that, so. So, we're gonna talk about the seismic retrofit first. So, early in the process, a group of three of us got together, and we selected ZCS Engineering and Architecture. They provided the architecture, engineering, all the design services, and they helped us kind of through the process. They helped us get to the point where we put it out for bid to get a CMGC, we decided to go that route. They did all the project management coordination, everything in-house, which was preferable for us, saved us a lot of time, and less coordinating between multiple entities. So, we selected Brocade and Jager. We had five presentations, and that was the group we selected. Work started June 2nd, got in just before school got out. We fenced everything off, everything was secure. The substantial completion date was August 22nd, which was what it was slated from the get-go. Both the companies we worked with were absolutely fantastic, the communication was wonderful, the presentations were great, they did wonderful. So, like I said, it was completed on time and under budget. So, this is the exterior of the building prior to construction, and I'm gonna give you some kind of befores and afters on these. So, before and after. This is the south side, before and after. So, the library was probably one of the coolest pieces to get done, all the beams getting put in, got rid of a lot of unnecessary bits and pieces, and was really able to secure that building a whole lot better. So, again, the library before and after. We opted to go with the exposed beams and the stainless, or the steel, the exposed steel versus painting, all of that. I think it was a nice combination. So, the music room, before and after.
Oh, wow.
Night and day difference. We've got acoustic panels up on the walls. They did find quite a bit of rot, termite damage on that south wall in the music room especially, and so we were able to get a lot of that redone as well. Some of the bits and pieces from the construction process. So, they eliminated quite a bit of the old structure and put a bunch of beams in. There's beams up above that you can't see as well that are structurally supporting So, they had to erect scaffolding throughout the entirety of the building to put the beams in, so I thought that was kind of fascinating, how they worked around all that. We've got some siding going up. We did opt for metal around most of the perimeter of the building, with the exception of where they play wall ball. We were trying to match an existing building, the gym structure, and so it had metal siding. Once we got to the wall ball part, we decided to go with hardy board, because it wouldn't have lasted too long. So, there's some of the hardy board, it's about where it starts and goes, goes towards the main building. And then, some more pictures of some progress on it. We got it all done. It's got some kind of cool snow barrier up above, keep them from sliding down and hitting the kids, and pretty neat, so that turned out pretty good. Some summer projects we did over the summer, of course. We got new carpet in the music room. We had quite a few problems with it, it was in really poor shape. The high school got new walk-in cooler and new walk-in freezer. Both of them had well exceeded their life expectancy and were beginning to fail. We restriped some parking lots in-house. The high school, we were quoted $32,000 to restripe it. We were able to do it in-house for about $800 in paint, so we saved a few bucks on that. We're always looking at opportunities to do things in-house and save money, so. Victor Pointe Boys Middle School Bathroom got remodeled, kind of got scraped to the studs and rebuilt back out. Central Howell got a new radon system in the kindergarten through 4th grade area. We'd tested over the limit by .01 three times, even with, that close, even with altering HVAC systems, bringing in extra outside air, we still just couldn't get under that threshold. So, we had to put in a system there. And then, the high school got a new speaker system for the gym. Heard it's pretty awesome, but I haven't listened to it myself, so hopefully it's as wonderful as it should be. So, there's one of our guys scraping. These are a couple recent repairs we had leak in. Victor Pointe leaked at the high school, thing was four feet deep in a closet, and so didn't leak for much room. Then we had a couple of repairs on the line going out to the athletics facility here. And then, sometimes things don't go like we want them to. Brand-new toilet, box rattles, that's what we get, time to get a replacement. And then, we'll touch just real briefly on the FCA and ADA for this facility, this is the high school. So, the Oregon Department of Ed contract with Bureau Veritas, they came through, and they're gonna hit every high, or every school, every building in the state of Oregon. We got ours done in June for this one. So, the main building, they've listed, their summary is good for the structure, fair for the facade, the roof's fair, tier's fair, plumbing's fair, elevator's fair, everything kind of fair, right?
I missed something, which building we talking about?
This is the main high school. Made high school.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Unfortunately for me, with this assessment for Bureau Veritas, it seemed more like an inventory than an assessment. When you go through and read the 132 pages on the main high school site, it just kind of gives you an outline of what's there, right? It's composite roof, it's, you know, block, it's not very indicative of the actual condition to me, it's very much an inventory of what's actually here. And, so for me, there's not a ton to glean from that. I was hoping it'd be a little more extensive and give us a little more feedback of what we, you know, what we can use to make some good decisions. The CTE building was also more or less in the same condition by their estimation. I don't necessarily agree with all of their assessment, to be fair. The roof is a metal roof, should last 50 years, and they've got it as fair, right?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, did they give you a criteria, how they?
Yeah, how they differentiate.
No, I wish there was more, I really do, I wish that they were a little more extensive, a little more detailed to this, because this has some substance that it would help drive decisions and give us a better understanding and be able to explain what we're doing, but this was very much an inventory, if you look at it, so. So, all right, that is more or less my spiel for the evening. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
I have two questions, because this was decided before I joined in. So, the seismic renovation, which basically built almost a whole new school.
Right.
Was that out of our budget, or was that a grant from the federal?
That's a grant from the state of Oregon.
From the state of Oregon, okay. And we were under budget for that?
Correct.
And so, where does the excess go to then?
Goes back to the state.
Goes back to the state.
Goes back to business.
Still a good job, because it's.
It was good to run it and have a good project run.
And that was one partial wing of Silvercrest, is what it was, it was the whole school.
I mean, that part. Yeah. Second question I have is the new walk-in refrigerator and freezer.
Yeah.
Did you have to redo the whole thing, or just the compressor?
Just the evaporators, compressor, yeah. We did reseal some of the boxes themselves, because there was some condensation and moisture. Where it's located, it doesn't breathe well, and so we did have some.
Well, it's on the first floor.
Yep, and it's tucked into a unique spot with, you know, extenuating circumstances, but it doesn't breathe well in that whole backside, and so there's an area above it, and it gets hot, and so that, just tons of condensation, so.
And it actually had failed this summer, didn't it?
It did. The compressor on the walk-in cooler completely failed, so.
Yeah, we lost a lot of food when that happened. We have an alarm on it now, so if it fails again, it notifies Elise that there's an issue, that the temperature's not the correct amount.
It'll notify Elise, the contractor, Vance, and I, every time, if there's any failure points, and so.
I like Jeff, giving the reports on the things like the cooler and things like that that have been done during the summer. It helps us to realize what, I think it's good for us and the public to know what we are doing, because there's so much we can't do that we know we need to do, but don't always have the money, so it's good to know what we are able to do.
Perfect.
Yeah, we had a little help on that one project, so just for your reference on the high school speakers in the gym, we had a donor donate half the amount for that, and then, you know, we did the rest of it, so that was really a kind donation.
And I appreciate it when the skills are there of your crew to be able to do some of that in-house, that saves a lot of bucks most of the time.
Trying to save time and money, do the best we can.
I know this, because of course, we almost had to move the meeting, because the air conditioning had gone out.
Right.
What's the status of, I know the HVAC system is already getting old.
Right.
Right? Apparently, I'm not the only one getting older, but.
So, from my understanding with the chiller here, it was undersized when it was initially installed for the original 1997 building.
Okay.
And then, we added on, and so we didn't add capacity for the chiller, we didn't add any extra, and so we're already kind of on borrowed capacity, and so it's already under stress and it's getting old. So, it's just one of those things we have to kind of baby along. We did have a couple of sensors that went out, and so we were able to get those back in and replaced, but it took a week to get those, the sensors in from the train.
So, I'm assuming here that those are numbers, like for example, when we come to the budget, that we can have an idea of how much it would cost to replace it?
Yeah, we will get three bids for that project, and we will try and add that into the budget for next year. Yeah, because it's just a matter of time before it goes out.
Yeah.
And it's undersized anyway, which anyone that knows anything about HVAC knows that that's not a good mix, so.
It's more reason why we did the capital reserve starting this year, which we started with a half million dollars that we were able to put in.
We have it in there right now, so, I mean, we have $500,000 in the capital reserve fund, so if it did, if it did give up the fight, we have the ability to fix it this year, but we will put an additional 500 in there next year for it. I think that, I mean, that might cover it, Jeff will figure it out, how much it's gonna be.
Yeah, looking between half a million, a million for it, so.
I mean, it'd be nice to just be able to include it in the budget, put it on some kind of a maintenance schedule, replacement every 30 years, or however long it's been.
Yeah.
So, since we're going down that path, what are your other top, top five concerns in the district?
In this building in particular, district-wide?
District-wide.
The HVAC system in this building, the controls itself, they're very old, and they're living on borrowed time as well. We have to have, we have an extra system sitting in reserve for when it does go down, but once that's gone, it's gone, it's running on Windows 7, and so it's not supported in any way, shape, or form anymore. If it goes, we have no ability to control the HVAC system in the high school. The roof at the high school, there's two sections in particular that are aged, or they're past their 30, about the 30-year range, and they're leaking intermittently. Mark Twain, almost entire, the whole entire building, has just a slew of issues and problems from the piping, the roof, the siding, it's, Mark Twain needs a lot of love.
Yeah, it was, it was, Mark Twain was originally a middle school building, or junior high, when it was originally used, and so it's not really configured for elementary kids, so it, you know, like it doesn't have a bathroom in the kindergarten classroom, I mean, like there are things about it that make it, it's a little bit awkward sometimes.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, bathrooms are spaced far, and it's not good for a kindergartner if something does happen. Roofs at Frost and the middle school as well, we got, apparently, 30 years ago, we got a good deal on roofing, we just had the money to do a lot of roofing, so they were all done at the same time, which they're all due at the same time again now. So, we've got quite a bit of roofing, Central Howell's roof on the main building needs to be replaced. Those are probably the bigger items, they're, you know, definitely the most expensive items on the list at the moment.
I think a lot of that roofing was done during the bond, so, you know, leftover residual funds from the bond when the high school was constructed, I would guess.
I think, didn't we get some of that for seismic upgrades too? Some of the last seismic upgrades, like just like for example, the Silvercrest, that building seismic upgrade, got a new roof out of it, right?
Correct.
I know a lot of the schools, Victor Pointe, some of the others got upgrades. So, my questions, I know we had talked, because this is long-range stuff popping up, and I wish the report was a little more detailed, you know, so we can itemize things when it comes to going for the bond. But, one of the things that I would personally like to have, and last time, because we have to answer this to our constituents, is basically cost-per-facility stuff. Last time, I had a list that was provided, that I could tell you how much each building costs to basically run. Not the staff, but the amount of money for electricity, water, gas, maintenance, so like, orders at Mark Twain, what's the cost that it takes to actually run the building? And it'd be nice to have that again for the next bond or long-range, if we could just, because I talked to you a little bit, but you don't have all that stuff. It's Alex, or?
Ryan pays the utility bills, so I'm gonna have to get ahold of her, get that information from her. It's out of the facility budget, but she gets the bill and pays it, so I have access to the actual bill.
The business department, Josh, has access to all those types of things, and we actually have asked Tom to do a building per cost center for us, to kind of tell us exactly what it costs to run a building. Like, Tom's already done the staffing portion, and he's working on other really kind of groundbreaking things in the state to forecast school funding and district budgets, so it's gonna be, and he'll collaborate with Jeff on that, so yeah, we're working on all that right now.
Yeah, I think by the time, so just my, just expectations that I would like, by the time like our first main group of whoever, like, not this, like next month, when we're having like interviews.
No, that's just to pick somebody.
Yeah, but when we first get the group that you picked for like long-range, or the community members and stuff, if we could have that day one, that'd be really nice.
And different ways of breaking it out, like per, cost per square foot, you mean, or like per student?
As long as I get just a basic number, because I know what the square footage is in every single building, but then the other way to look at the cost per building is, well, some schools are running at half enrollment, because when people go cost per student, well, that depends.
Right, right, exactly.
How many are currently here, or how much can they take?
Right.
So, that's a real number, is what it's capable of doing.
Different ways of looking at it, so you can kind of see it in a different dimension.
Yeah, I just need the numbed data of what it costs right now, so.
We will have it.
Perfect.
Good.
Okay, any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good job, Jeff.
Good, bud. It's getting better. It was nice to meet all of the new board members, welcome, and have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Ryan?
Hello, for all of you that don't know me, my name is Brian Rose. I'm here representing Bethany Charter, kind of talking about how to do gyms and things that kind of go along with that. I've got a few copies of plans that are all passed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
to look at. The little packets, kind of a little bit about us, our 10-year plan, it also kind of shows that we've been looking towards doing this. Originally, we had Victor manage, I think originally draw up our grand-scale plan back in 18, so I mean, it's not a fly-by-night idea for this gym, we've been trying to look towards it, and I think back in 18, we weren't sure if we'd ever achieve it, but, so that's kind of where we're at. So, we're, this is kind of where we're looking at, as far as the project, kind of relative to the existing building, is kind of off to the, should be the right-hand page, right-hand side of the page by the architect stamp and so forth. And so, this is kind of, takes place of the existing kind of covered structure, would get removed, and that's where the gym would kind of go, relative to the building and the road that we have down to the lower parking lot, all that stuff still is gonna remain as is.
The, on here, two markings of shed, is that small one in the pump house?
What, yeah, there's a, yeah, the little one that's kind of closer to the downhill part of the thing, that's the pump house. The other one is a little outbuilding for breakaway space for kind of one-on-one teacher-student consultation that we put in, I think last, last summer, now I can't remember, but, yeah.
See retaining wall and everything, so I assume this is going out over the hill?
Yeah, it's going kind of where the oak trees are.
I was gonna say, so that pretty well takes out the oak road, doesn't it?
Yeah, but we've got arborists looking at them, and they're getting kind of to their end of the age, and limbs are starting to get compromised, so.
Yeah, oak trees can get pretty dangerous.
Yeah. But, we have planted several new trees all around the perimeter of the property along the fence, to try to make up for that, and the other idea is to try to see what we can do as far as either like being able to reuse the wood, as far as like into planks for different projects or stuff around the school, or being able to, like, some of the limbs be able to turn into firewood and donate back to like the area community aid or whatever, so it wouldn't just, wouldn't go to waste. But, I guess so, kind of what we're hoping to see is kind of, if we've got any questions, what we need to do as far as to be able to proceed. I know there's some regulations as far as what we need to do for submitting for bids, but, and then, I guess the other concern that we have is, I guess, security for the property, as far as us investing the kind of money for this gym, based on a five-year contract, at the end of that five years that we just renewed, are you gonna try to kick us off? Is not an ideal aspect for us. So, that would be the other thing, is what can we do to achieve some sort of, either a long-term guarantee, or something with the property to secure our future there.
I know, one time, we talked about, you, PCS, practically purchasing the property.
Yeah.
I don't know if, what's happened since then?
Nothing really happened, and that's on the table, but the same token, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to kind of come up with an agreement that could work for both parties, but we'd also be sinking in this, so I don't know if there'd be a way to defer a purchase, but with an agreement, that way we get the gym done, and then, that way we don't have to tie up all of our funds for the gym to purchase the property, and then it pushes the gym out another five to 10 years.
What's our, go ahead.
I was gonna say, what's our legal option too? That's, well, you ask a legal question, I'm not a lawyer. Somebody over there is.
So, I mean, your option is to determine whether you think this is a good project that they should move forward with, so large-scale improvements like this on our property require your approval?
Well, I'll tell you where I'm at. I don't have a problem with it. I guess the more pressing thing would be, yeah, this is a big purchase for them, and they would want some guarantees, and I couldn't see on their side why they'd want to do it, but I don't see how this negatively affects the district in any way.
It doesn't, yeah.
Now, we'll have plenty of people upset about what Phil was talking about, you know, because we've dealt with that before, but I feel like if we, if we're concerned about the trees, then we're definitely gonna do it in a better way. We're not just gonna chop them down, let them rot, turn them into firewood, because otherwise, that's what we're gonna want to say no right away. Like, we need to slab those out, we need to, so we can actually do with resources.
Could we use some of that wood in the shop, maybe?
You could do so much with it. You can make beams, you could do like countertops, shop, yeah, you could do a ton of things. But, as far as the distance, or the long-term use of the property, I would obviously think they'd want some kind of MOU for probably at least 20 years. And then, I don't see any other issue for me, thinking about the uses of the stem, how it'd be different than Victor Pointe or their middle school. Again, it's a different relationship due to a charter school, but I feel like if we have events or tournaments, I feel like it'd be a nice discussion to have, and we could use it, it's a really nice facility. It would be definitely the nicest K8 gym in the district, so, that's where I'm at.
Can I ask a question? So, have you done some community vetting about the trees? Like, have you reached out to our friends in the community to see? I know that those are a hot
You know, I know that those are a hot topic, because every time I'm at the city and we talk about any type of construction or development or everything, the trees come up, and I know that's a really important part of our community. So, have you provided reports or anything to people to kind of explain?
Not really, but in the same token, they are also a safety hazard, because they do drop a lot, and so, certain times of the year, especially, pretty much trying to have to keep the kids out from underneath it, but the play structure is still there. We've had to do roof repairs several times, and we try to mitigate the best you can, but just the nature of the wind and different storms, we've had to, had to deal with some things after the fact.
Yeah.
They are, I mean, yes, they're nice to look at, but we're trying to do other things as far as other trees, but just sometimes, they've lived their life, so. But haven't really, I mean, you can, you can ask around, but they're just, with what we're wanting to do and the layout of the property, there's really not too much of an option.
Yeah, that's the only spot for it.
To save them, yeah, so.
Regarding the long-term situation here, I agree with Josh, but I think you and your board ought to discuss what, what you guys want long-term and come up a proposal. It's not something we can negotiate here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, and one consideration I think we need to think of from Silver Falls School District Board is, I for one, struggle with the concept of tying up one of our pieces of property for not our district's use until our middle school situation is figured out.
What do you mean?
Uh, it takes away a piece of property. We get in a long-term arrangement on this for twenty years. It takes away what could be an option of until we've got that, a solution to our middle school issue.
Oh, you mean like actually?
And I don't know what that solution's going to be.
You mean actually selling the property to them?
Or even twenty-year long-term.
Yeah.
Or long-term, because it's, because I totally, in agreement with them, that I wouldn't want to put this on unless I had, you know, insurance. I was going to be able to use the property for, we've thrown twenty years, but whatever the term would be. And so, I struggle with tying that all up when we've got a lot of unanswered questions of exactly what we're doing before this long-range facility thing is done. So, I think we've got a clearer picture once that's done of what we should be doing with any of our pieces of property.
So, can I ask, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding your, your side of what you just said.
We've got.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, just one second. So, they are, even though they're a charter school, they're still part of our district.
Yes, Daniel, but.
So, I'm not sure what the relationship between the long-term.
If we decided five years from now that the best place for Sequoia, we needed a place, and that could be it. It's out of the picture. It's, it's not, it takes away options for us. And once our long range is done, and we've got a solution figured out for our middle school, it's a domino effect. We've, we've had a lot of pieces, and so, I, I, I struggle with that piece of.
I, I appreciate you sharing that. I'm going to share that I disagree with you. Right now, I can tell you that their school, what they've done with it, and I've watched it over the years, is full, it's dynamic, it's thriving, and I think it's, I think if we need a space for Sequoia, there's a lot of alternative, or whatever else, and I don't think we're going to build a new middle school on their location either.
Daniel.
So, that's what I'm saying, I'm just telling you, I just disagree with you.
Don't twist my words, I'm saying anything about Bethany or what's going on there.
Yeah.
I have nothing but respect for what's going on there. I've watched that building, I spent eleven years in that building, and so, I, I know it well, and I have a lot of respect for what's been done there, and facility-wise and everything. And so, I'm not knocking that at all. I'm just talking about being a steward of our property as Silver Falls School District.
And you want, and you want flexibility in case we need it.
I, I think until we've got some issue, we've got several issues right now, and until we have that settled, I think we want as many options as possible.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Just because, just because we are improving this property, is the chain link fence going all the way around it? How high is it?
It's already there.
So, there's not going to be any additional?
No, the chain, the chain link's already there. We put that in this last summer, basically fenced in the whole place.
And then, the traffic flow, has that been discussed with the city? And I was.
Well, no, it's, we mitigated most of the issue by putting in the lower parking lot.
Okay, I was reading somewhere, I'm sorry.
And, and, yeah, I mean, like I said, some of the stuff been here for a little while. That's what we kind of wanted to show is that this, this idea has not just started this year.
Gotcha.
Uh, working towards this, wanted to show that as a board, we've been trying to, trying to figure out the best way, Bethany has been there now, the charter for twenty years now, and, but, any of the improvements on this property, Bethany Charter has paid for it. It doesn't come out of the district's budget, it comes out of ours, so.
Just remind me, how many trees are we talking?
I think there's about eight oak trees.
Eight total?
Yeah, maybe nine, I can't remember off the top of my head, but, yeah.
Well, this, this, just curiosity more than anything, with this additional, with restrooms and everything, are, is there going to be, have to be changes to the sewer system there?
No, not that the architect was able to find. I think everything is still going to be functional as far as the tank and the leach field, which is all kind of over this way.
Right.
And so, I think everything, from what he could say, and as far as the county, I mean, as far as any storm drainage, they said everything is still the same as far as that aspect, so. And it does not increase any sort of population in the school. This is just strictly kind of a functional gym that's separate, so it could be used for other activities throughout the community also.
I just wonder on new construction with the county. Because I know, and you would be aware of this, in the private sector, the county's really stiffened.
Yep, they make you check everything, but I think everything's oversized partly because we're not increasing volume of people using the restroom. That's why it's able to stay. It's not like we're adding extra classrooms and more students, it's just, just going to be restrooms for the, in this facility kind of thing.
Mr. Chair, can I interject something on Cass's question real quick? So, the, the maintenance of the building and improvements, Bethany has done those, but we don't charge them any rent, so they don't pay a monthly lease amount, so they pay one dollar a year. So, just, I just wanted, I just wanted to.
They're in charge of all their maintenance, all their, so if the roof goes bad, we don't touch it.
Yeah, we had to, we had to replace, we've done a lot of stuff there. Replaced the roof on the gym, that barrel roof, and.
Looks great.
Upgraded the bathrooms, so they had ADA facilities, got a restroom, so the teachers have their own staff restroom.
Are they up to date on the rent?
That whole dollar? I don't know.
I'll have to check.
Is it a monthly payment?
I'm going to start charging a cup of coffee instead.
The district has not taken half a dollar rent for several years.
So, I just looked, enrollment, I think max at Pratum is eighty. Is this about the same size of gym as they've got?
Honestly, I don't remember the dimensions of their gym, but this could be.
I would guess it's pretty close.
Alls I'm saying is like, it doesn't seem to be.
I don't know about the concessions and restrooms.
Yeah, looking at the dimensions, I'd say it's pretty close to probably to Pratum's gym.
And I'm curious, Sarah, do you mind sharing? I'm kind of curious where you're at on this. You don't have to, obviously.
No, I mean, I kind of agree with, if we've got to close the middle school, those kids have got to go somewhere. So, I kind of agree, you know, if we're going to push them into K-8s, and there's not enough room in those K-8s, it is nice to have a building, but again, I mean, that's a whole other conversation. But, I do think this is a great for the community, for Bethany, so.
Brian, what's your estimated, what's your like ideal timeline? How much, how much time do you?
Well, the sooner the better. I mean, I don't know if you, if everybody's been in the Bethany Gym, but it, it functions as just about everything as far as cafeteria, and where you have the concerts, and the PE, and, and so, it, it changes its function several times a day.
Yeah.
Whereas, it's also kind of tight, and, and so, this would just give us the ability to do a little bit better for the kids, too, as far as having a little bit more room to actually play sports and not have to be against the wall or whatever, so.
So, how long would it take you to do this?
Uh, realistically, I mean, ideally, if we could start in the spring, would be super, and it would probably take about a year and a half, and I don't know that that would be complete, complete, but that would be like structured and usable. And then, as we get more money, then, so it might be a structure with the underslab plumbing, but not, not finished bathrooms and for another year after that kind of thing. But we do have the money, I think, to be able to get the concrete and the structure, and get it basically dried in and functional, but not sure if we can quite get it complete for maybe a year or two after that as far as some of that stuff, but.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a corollary to this discussion, and I think it's important that it's on, on the record, is a question for you, Brian, and your, and your team. In the discussions about this project here, I've noted, you know, you note in several places that it's a combination of funding from donors and contributions and the Bethany family. Has there been full disclosure to all those donors, even though your board may be aware of it? All those who are thinking of contributing to this project, are they made aware of the legal status of the ownership of the property and all that? And I ask that from a legal perspective, are there conditions precedent that they, are these people donating this money with the assumption and belief that this is an investment that is entirely dedicated to what they may see as a forever project versus when, because of the legal status of the property, you can't guarantee that, right? So, are people aware that?
We have not asked for any donors yet. That's where it might come in to maybe the finished parts or whatever, but as right now, we have saved up enough of our federal money, the ADM monies, to have some money to put towards this.
Okay.
So, we don't have any donated monies to apply to this at this point.
And I just mentioned it because I read it, I read in the documents that you talk about the work of the Bethany.
And that, that's kind of the goal, but at that point, we didn't really have any of this excess savings, but we've managed to save just financially as the, as our budget, and it's gotten up to where we think we can get most of this built, and then, sometimes, if we get to that point, we can approach donors once the structure's there, but.
Yeah, because even on a lease, if you were to get some down the road, maybe, or, you know, if you're, if you are to get substantial donations to it, since they would be donations toward a physical capital of construction that is technically on district property, I would suggest, or I would, I would anticipate, that that would also give rise to that needing to come in some ways through the board, because then you're, it's donations that are being used to build on what is the board's capital, right? So, I think it'll be an important piece of the oversight of this project moving forward to make sure all your i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
And you would have to meet all the state procurement laws and all that, the prevailing wage and all those different things.
You mentioned SIA funding, too.
I'm not sure about that.
I don't think you have to, I think, I don't think prevailing wages come in unless you're taking bonded dollars.
It's public dollars. I was involved in the Victor Point building, and if it's donated dollars, you don't have to do prevailing wage.
You don't, yeah.
You do not.
Yeah, because that's how Pratum was built.
Yeah, they did the same thing.
Like quarter of the cost. My last question I have on this, because I think it's, the charter thing is really interesting to me. Trying to understand the relationship, and I, and I still do have questions. We can't, since we brought up the opportunity about flexibility and stuff for students, we just can't say, we're going to put our students in your building. You guys have autonomy of your own student body, correct? It's your principal's decision whether or not she takes students or not. So, we just can't say, oh, we got a bunch of students we're going to put in your building. That's not how this works, right?
We'd have to cut the contract.
So, not why the lease, not why the lease is active.
Correct, yeah.
So, back to the, they still would have to meet all the procurement laws and ORS 279. They're not, they're not exempt from that unless you did a set, like, we've done this, in my previous experience, we've done an MOU, if you had, like, say you had somebody that was going to build this project for you and donated a bunch of time and a bunch of excavation, whatever it was, I mean, the only way to do that is if you take it completely off the district's plate and someone else does all the, you still have to meet those procurement laws of the bidding and all the, yeah.
It'd have, it'd have to be done separately, separate from the district, correct?
Correct, and, yeah, so unless it's completely separate with an MOU, and it has to be a very detailed MOU, like it's several pages long of like how that project is managed, who's in charge of it. I could give you an example, Brian, but if you run it through the district, it has to meet state procurement policy and law. But I can talk to you about that.
Brian, one of the things mentioned under phase two and phase three is utilizing SIA funds. I don't know if that's a, a large portion or a small portion of that, but that's one of the things being looked at right now in all the, kind of the chaos with the state. It's really, there's some unknowns with the, with the future funding, or even the current BNI and funding is there, so. Just giving you a heads up, have to wait and see each month, I think, now, for the next couple of months, what the, what the news is as things change.
Yeah, we'll know more on November nineteenth, when the next economic forecast comes out. There should be more information about how that impacted the state budget a little bit more.
I'll go back to my previous comment, I think you guys need to figure out what your long-term, what you want your long-term plan to be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to having more conversations, I'm for it, Brian. As long as we have better, you know, how this works.
Yep, that's great, Brian, there.
Quite the undertaking. Be a nice facility.
But I mean, as far as that, I guess, I'm a little kind of confused about where, I mean, you're saying I should come up with a long-term plan, but you're saying that you might want the school in five years.
Oh, that's just me, that's just one of seven. But, Kim, you tell all of us, what is next steps that we need here?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think there's a couple of things that need to happen here. I think, I do agree with Phil that we need to do our long-range facilities process and kind of figure out what the best plan is for the district moving forward, and where we need to concentrate our efforts, and we have several companies that are going to bid, managing that long-range facilities process for us, and that's going to happen soon. And so, I think, I think we run the risk of, we have a middle school that is in very, very poor condition, and in order to replace that, it's millions of dollars, and so, we really need to pass a bond, and we have to have that long-range facilities information to do that, but I'm very concerned about our middle school property and its condition. And so, it makes, it keeps me up at night thinking that, you know, somebody could shut me down any minute and say, hey, you have to move those four hundred and eighty kids that are in there. That, that just happened recently in Ashland, so the superintendent got a call, and the fire marshal had gone through a building in their district that was a hundred years old, and he shut it down that day, and they had to move everybody out. So, I mean, there are times when, I mean, we're in very, we're in a very precarious position here because we need, we need to move forward with a plan that works for the district, but, you know, we, we love and honor Bethany, they're one of our buildings, one of our schools, and so, you know, we want to do what's best for you, too, but we also can't, it's not prudent to eliminate, as Phil said, you know, some of our options, and Sarah mentioned that, too, while we don't, while we're just exploring that still for a couple of months. So, I don't think, I mean, I think our timeline, I think we need to wait a little bit and see what they propose and what they recommend, because I, I don't, well, I don't, that would never be a middle school campus, but, you know, I don't know what we would do with five hundred kids if all of a sudden they told us we couldn't be in that building. So, there's just, there's just, there's a lot of uncertainty in the district, and we need, we need a long-range facilities plan that has current prices, current ideas, like, can, can we remodel that structure at Slade Street? I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of things in play here for the district and trying to manage all that, and that's, this is a really complicated problem. And your project is great, I think, I've been in your gym. I think this is a great improvement for the kids, and I know it's a great thing for the community, because the community needs extra facilities, and so, you know, the Parks and Rec portion of Silverton is kind of in dire need sometimes, so my, my recommendation would be to hold off until we have a little bit more information about how, how we're supposed to move forward to find, we have to find a way to build a middle school. We have to, and that, and that's going to be really important for us, and so, I just think we just need to examine that a little bit more.
I, I would appreciate your board getting together and talk about what kind, you talked about guarantees, right? So, what kind of guarantees would you like? Or, if part of our discussion in the. Or if part of our discussion in the facilities as a whole, for example, to have an advantage of selling your property, maybe you guys would be interested in it, but I think that you guys need to tell me in order for me to vote on anything, well, do you need another five-year extension on the lease, or do you want a 20-year lease? Or do you just feel like you should find some kind of way to buy it before you invest the million dollars?
Yeah.
So that would be a good thing for you to bring to us.
I agree with Daniel on that, that I think that's what, what do you ultimately want from us before you go ahead with this?
Yeah. Well, I guess if we're interested in purchasing, how do I find out what you guys are interested in as far as for selling them? I know you have stuff appraised not that long ago, just after the deficit there, so I'm assuming that there's.
That's right. Did we?
There's some value that you've got that's.
I'm trying to remember that.
I'm not sure, Brian, if she, if she, we did have an appraisal of certain properties, but I don't know if Bethany was one of those. Do you guys remember, Phil?
It, it was, I want to say it was, but those documents weren't left with us.
Okay, we'll see if we can find that.
And so, but I believe, Josh, do you?
I have to say.
Know that, but I'm, I'm relatively certain it was one that was on there.
I know, but I don't know that was more of the executive session talks.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, real estate transactions and property, yeah.
And so all those notes.
So, yeah, those notes are gone.
Well, for me, they're somewhere.
I'll, I'll figure it out.
That document has got to be somewhere.
I'll figure it out, don't worry.
It comes down to two key words, diligence and disclosure.
Yeah.
Diligence and disclosure, every step of the process. It's fair for the Bethany team, it's fair for the board, and it's fair for the community and anybody who would, even if they've not given money, they've given in-kind donations, right? There's still naturally some expectations when you do that, right, that you're doing it for goodwill.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just, I always remember those two things.
Yeah.
Diligence and disclosure.
Seems to me there's quite a bit to sort out because of where the money, what we're hearing, where the money's from, what parameters need to be met as far as public dollars, because it sounds like the public dollar's at least getting up to the shell point.
Yeah.
And so how that's done needs to be figured out. And then as Daniel mentioned, what are your guys' needs as far as future for this to happen? And then, and the balancing act for us is not, we've got to look at it not just as, just Bethany per se, but also what's best for Silverton School District, for the whole district. We've got to look at the whole, whole picture. So.
Question.
There's mine?
I think so.
I'll work on the appraisal part of it and see whether that.
Thank you guys for your time, and thank for everything you're doing in the district and the.
Thank you. This gave you a very good time.
Let's return these so you don't have to reprint them the next time you come by.
We're going to keep ours.
I don't need to make this home. And thank you, Brian.
Okay, next item, board superintendent operating agreement. You have the agreement there on, on the agenda that was Derek put together after taking in information from people?
Yeah, it is in your packet under number 6A.
Yeah. The, yeah, were you, I was going to.
Oh, sorry, you go ahead. I thought you wanted me to take it.
No, and item four, after getting input from fellow board members, a number four, on the original sample that we had, it talked about establishing goals and objectives for themselves and the district, meaning the board and the superintendent, and Derek changed it to the board and superintendent will participate annually in establishing goals and objectives for the district instead of separating all out. Then on number eight, the original talked about two or three depending on board members, our policy has two, and so be consistent there, it would be two. Number 14, the board will communicate with one another, and adding the word directly, will communicate directly with one another was added in. It also was talked about on number 11, I believe it was, on talking about, I'll cheat here and look at Derek's notes. On number 11, about putting in there before they're brought to the public, these items. And in an ideal world, and most of the time Derek pointed out, that that is the way we'd want to do it, but it also kind of boxes into a corner when that isn't the opportunity to be able to do that before a decision is made, or sometimes decisions get made. And so he suggested not changing number 11 for that reason, and leaving it the way that the OSBA suggested having. And so there are just slight tweaks. All in all, it's pretty close to the example two that we were presented with a while back. So do we have any discussion on any of these items?
Number nine, I think.
Yeah, that was my.
Just, yeah, there you go. I'm going to like to be specific about policy, and I'm like, I don't like that, what, I mean, do we actually have time on it? Sometimes they go long. I say we should try our best to end meetings in a reasonable manner.
I like the start part.
Yes, correct.
Start, start part, you got, need to start it on.
We end when we end. I mean, sometimes we have business to do, and if it takes us longer, it does. We hope it does not, but.
Is there some kind of wording we could put there?
But we don't.
That it would be, I want to say. To a reasonable amount?
No, you just say, "Start on time and try to be as judicious with the time that we have."
I mean, something like that. That's, that's, that's the chair's discretion and directive.
Well, since we don't have a specific end time.
Yeah, that's what I said. Some districts have a specific end time, like they don't go past a certain hour, like, you know, nothing good happens after 10:00 P.M.
It's midnight, by the way.
Depends on the day. Sometimes nothing good happens at 7:00.
We tend to rule that effect, no decision to be done after 10:00 o'clock.
Yeah. I believe that.
Start, start and.
So that's probably why that's like that, but we certainly could adjust it.
Start meeting on time, just have it at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, and just leave the end along. We've kind of been dealing with that constantly as far as our end meeting and figuring out how the best to deal with that. Just to, depends on the meeting, and you don't want to stifle discussion when, when it's productive. So any other changes?
Just 12 reads interesting. The chair responses to group emails sent to the board. The chair should respond to, I don't, I don't know what we're trying to.
Or just responds? Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's just a typo, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what's, what's on the OSBA?
But, so that's an interesting discussion point for me, because sometimes I also like, because, and you do a good job of this, Phil, like, please know that if an individual board member responds, because we should have the ability individually to respond to them, but know that we're speaking on only our behalf.
Right.
And not the board.
Right.
This looks right here, like the chair responds to group emails sent to the board as a group, I guess.
I, I'm thinking the intent.
Yeah.
Of it is just so that it doesn't stay out there in space, that somebody from the board is for sure responding to it.
They're acknowledging.
And.
Yeah, got it.
And, and, you know, individual board members are still entitled to respond and give their point of view to whoever the person is.
And that, and that.
But this way it ensures that that's just, well, I, I contacted the board and heard nothing.
And 13 backs that up and says, "There's no individual board member has a sport, he doesn't speak for the board," so that works.
So shouldn't 12 say that the chair is the spokesperson for the board, the spokesperson for the board?
I think that's worded.
Isn't that more like, the chair is the only one that can speak for the board? I think that's in policy.
Yeah, it's in policy. The board, the chairs.
Shouldn't it just be like, if, if we must add it in there, shouldn't then just be word for word what is in the policy, which is chair is the spokesperson for the board?
Well, number three kind of feel like says that maybe.
Then we should take number 12 out altogether, because it's. Well, it does, yeah. It's, if anything, it's just opens the door for confusion.
I really feel that's covered in three anyway, and it's just a little redundant.
Anybody have a problem with striking 12?
No.
Including Kim?
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I'm just rereading three. I think, I think, I agree with Cass, I think that three covers it anyway.
And I think we've done a really good job, like, doing our email communications, by the way.
You guys are really, I mean, Phil's really responsive to people, like, he doesn't want him to sit there, so, and then your response is always very kind and caring.
Some taste a little more diplomatic.
Phil's calm.
Yes, but no, everybody deserves to be heard, and, okay. Anything, okay, I'll.
I did like number 10, by the way, being in there, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
It is, keeps it open enough for the board, but also we need to respect the individual school administration, so I appreciate that being in there.
Yeah, they're busy people. I mean, you know, there's a lot going on there, so it's good for them to know that you're.
Okay, I'll give those revisions to Derek then.
Hopefully we can approve it in two weeks.
And hopefully, yes, we'll be able to approve a final copy next meeting. Okay. Superintendent's preliminary goals.
I think that is my superintendent's report. Oh, there you go. Thanks, Daniel. So we're going to go through some fall fun and some homecoming highlights, so those pictures, those are pretty funny pictures. The top one is Miss Debbie fixing the football touchdown flag that, so the first game, that flag was donated by donor, it's really cool, and the kids flip it up, flip it up into the stands when they score a touchdown, and the first day it got hung up on a piece of fencing and ripped, and it had this big hole in it, and Debbie and I were like, hmm, and it's weird fabric. So Debbie width stitched it, and then we taped it with RV tape, and it took up the whole conference room. So thank you, Debbie, for fixing that. It's a good summer.
Before I was there, I went into an agenda meeting, you had it spread across your office.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, we were talking about it, we were finding thread and all those things. Emily Rayo and her Spirit Week for Homecoming, and she really, she really gets into this. She even has her corgi dressed up in her classroom, so she's very into it. On the bottom left are Sherry Thompson and their crew that came in, and Sherry Thompson spent all summer trying to figure out what decodables to buy to go with UFLI. So a decodable is a book that you use with a small group of students, like six or less, and you kind of track the unit you just taught or the lesson you just taught to see if the kids understood the content, so if they can read that little book that is associated with the lesson, then it's a good, it's like a good formative assessment, and they were sorting those books because it was cheaper to buy them in these big bulk groups, and so they sorted all of those, and it was a lot. It took hours, yeah, days actually. And then Patrick in his homecoming, he was a Viking. So that was pretty fun.
Appropriately.
Yeah. And then you've got some more pictures of homecoming, so that's the dance team in the middle, and then Lynn, I thought these pictures were funny, because Linda and Taren Wald were dressed alike, which is cute. So the theme of the homecoming was Disney, Disney themed, so it was very fun. And we missed Tony and his fox outfit.
Yeah, fox.
Yeah. No blog fox this year. So Boss's Day, you know, I think it's fun if people know that the people at the district office do fun things sometimes. So Debbie organized this, and she had anyone that reports to somebody dressed like their boss. So that's Debbie at the top, dressed like me at my desk, with her Starbucks like I have all day long. And then everyone else with their, with their boss outfit on down below that, and then the whole crew with whoever they dress like. So it was really fun, it was a really fun day, and Alex was dressed as Jeff, and it was hilarious.
I was going to ask, who was Jeff? I could tell it was Jeff.
Yeah, Marissa had the UCLA shirt on, and Tony's, he had a little wig. It was really funny. And then Amanda was dressed like that, so it was super funny. Division 22, so we are required by the state of Oregon to report on that each year, and Division 22 is the requirements for all school districts in the state of Oregon, so if you're, as one of the 197 school districts, you have to do this report. So we were not compliant in a couple areas last year, and we shored those up. With the exception of adopting health curriculum in grades nine through 12, we did use some open source documents for grades K through eight, and so the health, the health and PE team, they were working on how to deliver those new standards to kids. They did that on the last in-service, so that was really great work they did for two days. But grades nine through 12, that product was super, super expensive, so the textbooks for just health for grades nine through 12 were, I think, nearly over $100,000. I think it was 200 for the whole district, so yeah, I think it was about $100,000 for just the high school. So we will try and put that in our budget for this year. There were not a lot of options, so there was only one textbook that was really approved at the high school level with all of the parameters that ODE requires. And so you can adopt outside of their recommendations, that's legal, you just have to file a waiver and say, "Hey, we're going to adopt this instead." So we're going to put a team, another team of teachers together and have them look at it again, and see if they can find a product that's less expensive, that's maybe not on ODE's list. ODE's list is really comprehensive for the health curriculum, and so it makes it hard to find a product. So we have an extension through ODE, so they gave us a one-year extension to do that work, and so they know that we're working on that.
If you find something that meets your needs in another state, but doesn't hit all the, all the aspects from ODE, can you just have supplemental information to make that up?
Yeah, you, yeah, well, you would have to come up with, you know, so they have their requirements and what the state standards are, and so if, if it didn't hit a certain standard, you would, yeah, you would be able to hit that in a different way and just show that you did that. The, the good part about all the new health curriculum is that they, they took the sex ed component of it, and they made it an online digital component, so it's not actually in the textbook. So if you want to opt your student out, that, they have to access that content through digital ways, and so there's no flipping through the textbook and coming across something that a parent doesn't want them to. Those have been extracted, and those are online only. So that was kind, that was kind of a nice, you know, for our families that don't want their child exposed to that content, it's not in the actual textbook anymore. And then you have, the teacher has to turn that on, so if you, you know, if you digital, if you opted out, that digital portion just wouldn't come on for your student. So that was kind of a slick.
That's a nice aspect.
Yeah, it is, it's a great new tool. Yeah, so ODE has, you know, they're, they're in the social studies cycle, so we'll, we'll also talk about social studies this year. But these are very expensive things, and when you're having budget, you know, constraints like we're talking about now, these are the first things that get pushed to the side, unfortunately, and that's, that's not great, because we want our teachers to have good tools, and we want our kids to have, you know, really current content that is good. So we'll keep working on that. So I have a couple of goals. So the first goal, so we talked about this last year, so I had a goal around being fiscally fit in the district, so because we were in such dire straits, you know, I had a, I had a goal of the ending fund balance between two and three million, which we exceeded, and so that was really exciting to hit that goal. And this year, so we have, you know, that ending fund balance comes in as our beginning fund balance now, and so we're in a much better situation. But Tom and I, mostly Tom, has been working on a forecasting tool that can predict out six years. So what happens is, the district's budget just by the biennium, two years at a time, and we, we don't really have a good tool, and our system is so complicated, it has so many nuances, that we don't really have a good tool to like say, well, what will happen in five years if we were on these same trends? And so Tom has this amazing tool. Everybody wants it, huh, Tom?
Make them pay for it.
Make them pay for it.
Sell it all over the country.
Yeah, Tom should.
We can get a middle school out of it.
And it will actually predict, and it's really cool, because you can like, you can actually put in like, like, so say you needed a roof at Robert Frost. You can actually, there's actually a section for like oddities that you can add in, and it'll put it in for that year. It's really a cool thing, and he's gonna showcase it for you. He's actually gonna try and show it to you in two-person or three-person teams, so that you can see it up close and ask more detailed questions. So you're not in a forum, so you can come in and look at it and really get deep into it, because it's really interesting. This will allow us to predict further down the line. And it'll allow us, when we're bargaining, to have a better idea of what staffing costs will be in the future, what benefit costs will be in the future. And it also shows what happens when they don't manage the PERS situation, and we keep having these large PERS hits every year. And so that, that's a really interesting way to look at it, and so that is my goal, is that that will give us a really accurate picture of where we're headed, and it will help us make financial decisions about long-range facilities and all these different things. So that's my first goal, and we've been working on that. When did you start working on that, Tom?
Last month.
Yeah, so we've been, this has been ongoing for a little bit. And we've been talking about it as superintendents for a long time, having a six-year, five to six-year forecast. So, that's a.
And some, and some states have required that for a while.
Yeah.
I had to do it when I was bargaining as a superintendent in California, I had to at least apply to your protection.
Yeah, Tom asked me.
Why you don't do it, I don't know.
I don't know either. Tom asked me if we have one when he started, and I'm like, no, but we should.
When Kitzhopper was the governor, he tried to do, change it to a five and ten-year projection, and at the time I was ahead of a state agency. And, and when the successor of Kitzhopper came in, they kiboshed that right away, and went back to the biennium. I mean, those of us who have businesses, you can't run on a two-year budget where you don't know for the first six months how much you're gonna get over the next year.
Yeah.
It's like, I mean, it makes no sense. This makes so much more sense.
Yeah, it's really awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so Tom's gonna showcase it to COSA and some of the other, and he's, and so, you know, he's been working on it with a consultant, and it's really very cool, so it's gonna make Tom famous. I don't know what's gonna happen to me.
Well, it's partially, really, Kim's driving me to do this. And I, what, what I think Kim is trying to do is, we've been talking a lot about the current year because of what's happened. You've been focused on just the current year. And when you get out of that space to a more normal space, and you look at multiple years, the point's not really to act one hundred percent accurately know where you're gonna be, but you need to know what's moving it, and understand it in kind of three dimensions. For example, the, the biennium after next, our total PERS rate in terms of percentage of payroll could go up zero, three percent basis points, six, nine, maybe twelve? Well, zero would be great. Twelve would be devastating for our budget. So you wanna see how that impacts and where, and the point's not trying to predict it, but to understand that. And how do you then, as Kim has talked about, we need to connect that to strategic planning, and how, you know, the administrators and the leaders all get it, get that kind of wrapped around their, their brain and understand it.
I know this is new, but do you have a clue on how much time it's gonna take to maintain that? There's a lot of moving parts that's moving all the time.
Well, the secret to it is, is not, you're not aiming for a hundred percent accuracy, so you're aiming for like ninety, ninety-five percent accuracy. So you're, you can have ten main points that cover that ninety or ninety-five percent. You would otherwise have a hundred tabs, and it would, if somebody gives you a scenario, it would take you ten minutes to try to figure out all the little things to enter. Because you wanna start moving quickly. What if we did this? And you enter it, and there it is. What if you take that away? Okay, there it is. And it allows you just to start getting comfortable.
And we, and we based it mostly on general funds, so it's not all these weird grant funds that we get. Those are not in that equation, because the grant funding and what those pay for, like, those could go away. And so this is just state school fund, general fund focus.
Correct.
It's gonna save a lot of time for the budget committee.
It's very cool. You're gonna love it.
And it shows a visual from it as well?
It's a visual, yeah, and also shows a graph.
Like one of those like economic games that you could use with kids where they have like a country, you can put in a tax rate, and then it.
It would be a fabulous game. I think people would buy it.
They do, they do. It exists, it exists.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is like that, like, we pull, we put, like, we put some increases into the state school fund to see what it would do. And it's like, oh, okay, so there's where you need it to be. I mean, it helps us advocate to the legislature and to the governor, you know, what that looks like, and, you know, like, when they're talking about other, other things, accountability, which includes like, you know, increased testing, increased like accounting procedures and all these different things. Those all cost money, so you can actually add that additional staffing in and see what it does. You can add all those different things in, and it's really, it's really a great predictor. And it shows you what we need to, what we need to petition for and what we need to be passionate about.
So can we use this as a tool when we go out for the bond? I mean, can we, will it create tools that we could use in real time to answer questions to constituents?
Anything that's got future, future costs, and you wanna do scenarios along those lines, yeah.
I was thinking of the bond campaign. That'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be really nice.
Or when you do PERS and have tier one that could use this to project what I'm discussing.
Yeah, yeah, they should have done that, and you'll, you'll actually, at some point, you'll be able to see where the PERS starts to drop off, so, you know.
Cause eventually, what?
I'll be gone. I'll be retired by then probably, but it'll, it'll eventually come down the other direction. Okay, so that's goal number one. And we're gonna use that all over the place. So, goal number two, so this is a change this year to, to work on some culturally responsive instructional leadership and improvement. And so we have been working really diligently to support K-five literacy in the district, especially K-two. And so we are in the process of implementing core supplemental curriculum to support early literacy and reading proficiency in grades K through five. And this is a year-long, this is, this, I mean, this is a year-long goal for me, but this is like a three to four-year process. So, the, and the teachers are so cute, because they want it to work, you know, they want everything to be perfect, because they're, they're so invested in their kids, and they're such professionals. But this is a process, so I was on the phone with an implementation consultant today for ninety-five percent, which is our grade three to five product. And she's like, Kim, you know this takes four years, and I'm like, yeah. It, it is a real process to turn those types of things around if you wanna do it with fidelity. And so we've done a lot of professional development, so the photo on the right is Diana Son, who was here. Son, rhymes with the phone, I always say it wrong, Diana Son. She was here and taught the UFLI instruction to K-two teachers. And so they spent all day in a UFLI training, and then they had an opportunity to take, you know, the curriculum maps and unit maps and projection maps that they made with that X? They never really finished that work, so they took those projection and unit maps and some of those things, and they, they filled in some of the gaps that they had, and they really worked on those maps, and the teachers did an excellent job. Like, we're gonna use this for this lesson, we're gonna use this, you know, so they really went, they had a lot of planning time, which was really helpful to them. And, you know, actually focusing on utilizing our Wonders curriculum, where we, where we haven't relied on that in the past. And Wonders is good curriculum for, for part of what you instruct in, in literacy. It has a good comprehension vocabulary, like, there are some parts of Wonders that are really good, like it, you know, like the, the components in a story, like the beginning, the middle, and like all those different things. You teach littles, I mean, like, you actually teach kindergarten kids about the beginning, the middle, and the end of a story. And so it has those components in it, and, but it, it is, it is lacking in the foundational skill piece. So when you look at the science of reading and how kids actually learn how to read, how they actually learn how to decode text, we needed these supplemental programs to help them do that. And so that's what this is, so it, it will actually take the science of reading and phonics and phonemic awareness and fluency and all those different parts that Wonders isn't great at, these programs are great at. And so it's, they're working together. And we have also been partnering with Gresham Barlow. Gresham Barlow did this work about three to four years ago, and so they're, they're in front of us, and they actually have all the same products we have. So we sent a team to Gresham Barlow on one of the in-service days, and we'll send another team back. We're sending a sped team up there to look at how they do the sped portion of it, because there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. If someone else has, has similar products and is doing this work. And, and Diana Son and Amity has used UFLI for years, and her scores are through the roof. And so these, if you use these things with fidelity, it, it just gives your teachers a lot more tools to help reach kids.
What do you think Barlow's scores look like?
They're, they have show improvement, marked improvement. I could show you the graph, but yeah, they're good.
They, they, they note, take notice in those three, four years that you have.
Yeah, they, they seem to be seeing some improvement, and, and Amity has seen a lot of improvement. So Winston Dillard, where we implemented science of reading, a ten-point jump on their OSAS scores. And ten points is nearly impossible. So if, if we do this with fidelity, it will, it will improve our reading scores. I'm pretty confident. So we'll, we're gonna present some student data to you along the way. We, we did, we added the STAR early literacy assessment. We're piloting that this year with Renaissance. ODE is completely changing how we do our accountability in the state of Oregon. And there are going to be four products that you can use to track student growth. And so I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain that STAR will probably be on that list. And so we, we are piloting that in K-two, so that we can see how the kids do with this new program.
That's what I was gonna ask, are there any that we feel have confidence in that are of those four?
I think MAPS is a good product, I think STAR's a good product. We also use DIBELS as a universal screener, so we use that to screen for dyslexia and to just screen for reading level. And I will say that our kindergarten DIBELS scores are really low when the kids came in. Their, their beginning of the year scores are really low, so we have a lot of work to do.
This is really important.
Yeah, it is super important. It's probably the most important work we will do.
You, yeah, you keep hearing me say it time and now, I'm gonna keep repeating, we get, we get it done here, everything else gets a whole lot easier.
Yes, it will. And, and, you know, I think Mrs. Ross, who teaches reading up at Scotts Mills, when I was up there the other day, Rachel Ayers says, tell her about, tell her about ninety-five percent. And so Mrs. Ross is like, oh, Kim, the kids come in and they know their routines, and she goes, they're able to, they're starting to be able to break words down. And so those explicit teaching techniques where you break those syllables down and break the sounds down, even kids that are having a difficult time are, are seeing success, and they're excited about that. And she was very excited about it, so. Those are two really cool programs, and if you wanna see this, we'll set up a tour for some of you. You can, should see it in action. It's pretty interesting. And then the last goal is to put together, so all of this work that we do in the district, we, we have an expired strategic plan. It expires in December of twenty twenty-five, and I think that that's really important to have for the district. And this is something that our administrative team identified last year, when we talked about prioritizing. We were talking about how we, how we spend our money, what we spend our money on, and how we prioritize that. And that has to be based on a strategic vision and plan and mission, so that we know what direction we're headed. And part of that is also, you know, like addressing our long-range facilities needs and how we make our district the best district in the state. And I think we have the ability to do that, but I think we need to know which direction we're going. And so, well, Amity SD is helping us with this process. We're in a pilot program with them, and they're, they're, they're using, you know, data from us to see, you know, where to tweak it. So there'll be some feedback data for them, because they'll do it with other districts next year, and I'm really excited about that. And they have a really good communications team that is helping us with some of the communications for this, and so we'll have really beautiful products that go with this. But the main point for me, for a strategic plan, is so that our internal employees know exactly what our vision is and where we're going. So it's really important that we be able to communicate that out to teachers and staff members, so that they can say, this is, this is our priority. And when everyone knows what our priority is, then we will get there together. And so just really making sure that we're all on the same page and taking a lot of stakeholder feedback. We have a big team put together for this. There's, I think, eighteen people on the large team. And so it's gonna be a really interesting process.
I'm curious, so where are we at with this?
So the first meeting is Thursday. For the small team, that's the smaller district level team, Tony and I and a bunch of people. And then the big team, I think, meets on November seventh? Yeah, we started out, we had to change it because I have a class on Thursdays, so I think it's November seventh.
And Phil, you were presenting us on, on that group, or?
What was that?
It was one of us and.
Yeah, so on that November seventh meeting invite that'll go out, there are two people that were on there. So Sarah Deliskey was first, and then Wally was second to ask. And then when we have part two, Daniel, so if we have a, a second round, or if we have any other, then, I know you were interested too, and so was Derek. But I did the first two people that emailed me, and then there'll be other opportunities for those other, other parts.
So are we still working with that? That plan or the schedule that they presented?
Well, I told them.
My first meeting?
I told them you wanted the schedule to be faster. I did tell them.
I, I'm still, I, I am still a little slightly traumatized by the amount of time that is displayed for that. And, and I, I still cannot relate to how, why it takes so long. It's not a complicated process.
Yeah, it, well, I think it is, it, our district is kind of complicated, and so, you know, we have to make sure that we're getting input from all corners of the district, so, you know, we cover two hundred and seventy square miles.
But that's, but that's the complicated part, is to put the panel together.
Yeah.
But once you have the panel, it's not, like, it, it's a focus, right? It's, it's a goal. It's a process that you use to identify whatever you call it, your rocks, your goal, your aim. But you, you just establish three to, at the most five, and then you bring a consensus through exercise and process.
Yeah.
So it does not take eight months to do that. You, you're right, the initial panel to establish that is a complex thing. But once we have it, we can run with it.
Yeah, and I mean, we'll do it as expeditiously as possible. I do say that, I will say that education's a little different than private industry in some way.
No, I, I understand that.
Yeah, sometimes it's.
I'll take a few months, but I'm like, you know.
You need that. You guys need this.
Well, we did it in Dallas.
Needs a two.
Yeah, we did it in Dallas, and Jerry Cologne ran that process. When I was in Dallas, I was the director of teaching and learning, and I really miss Jerry. He passed away last year. But that took a whole year, so it's not abnormal for it to take a school year and to put it together. It would be better if it was done quicker, because I would like to have it done ideally early spring, you know, so that we can use it when we're talking about our budget priorities and that, you know, what do you spend? What are, what are you prioritizing your money towards, like, what programs, what systems? And really have a cohesive, organized approach to that.
All decision-making should be around that.
Correct, yeah, it should drive everything you do, yes. And if you are trying to do something, and you say, is that on our strategic plan, and if you say no, then that's probably not something you should spend money on.
Or time.
Or time, correct, which is also very expensive. Questions?
Yeah, just one, and this is, you know, it's on topic, off topic. Just, you know, it was goal two, culture responsive instructional leadership, and sitting in, one, Kim, you do a great job of this. But I'm really worried about our teachers. Sitting in that, that meeting the other day, and just hearing just how stressed they are having kindergartners or first graders still coming to school in diapers, them not being able, like, when am I supposed to go do that? And then tell them, like, they want IAs, and I'm like, guys, we just, we have to plan for the next colas and the round. They're talking about all their vector trainings they're having to take on chemicals, and they don't even really handle them, because we have janitors. I'm like, what can we do to take something off their plate that they don't have to do? And the answer was like, well, our insurance would go up. And I'm like, well, how much? Two thousand dollars, or whatever it would be. I'm like, well, cut it. That, cause that shows to the teachers that like, hey, we're trying everything we can to do if it's not absolutely necessary. We understand you're tired, we know you need a break. This is how we can do it. You already do a great job of supporting enough, and I think a lot of the, honestly, the, the growth we're gonna make in this, Kim, is your leadership. Your heart, your passion for the teachers, they're willing to endure a lot, because they know you care. But I really wanna know what we can take off their plates.
Yeah, that is, that is a great question. I mean, anytime you talk about adding any type of initiative, like, what, what should you remove that is, you know, not necessary? So I think strategic planning is a really good way to do that. It's like, it's like, do we need to do the youth truth survey? Do we need to do, like, some are required, like the Oregon Healthy Teens, that one's required for us to administer. It's not required for families to take it. They can opt out. But like, what can you do to remove the burden? Removing vector training is, I mean, that is, that is, I mean, Tony could speak to this more, but that is our legal protection in the district. but that is our legal protection in the district. And so, what happens is, like, when you have an issue like they had in another district with sexual misconduct, if your employees haven't taken the sexual misconduct training through PACE, you're on the hook for all of that. And so, that is our protection. And although I know it's burdensome and they don't, it, it doesn't always, doesn't feel like it always pertains to them. I did the hazardous chemical one. Jeff would be embarrassed, because I always have to, I can't test out of it. I test out of all the others, but not that one. I always fail. And so, I'm like going through it again, because it's got all these weird things. And so, I mean, we make it as easy as we can for them to test out of some of them. But it is just part of our PACE insurance, and we can't operate without that insurance. We, they provide a lot, a lot of legal advice for us and a lot of HR advice. And so, that's just a really important part of our system that we can't eliminate. But we can maybe, you know, delete the ones that aren't pertinent to them if we can.
That's why I'm just asking, just, if we get creative. And I mean, I'm tired of the trainings that I have to take every year. You know, and I know why they exist. It's lawsuit. That's the only reason. And I can't even stand the society that we live in, that we have to do all this because of that. So, anyway, I appreciate it. That's my soapbox on it.
And Josh's point, just to dovetail on that. I know in my career, it felt like there was always things being added on, and hardly ever, anything was taken off. And, you know, and I can't give specifics, you know, to what could and couldn't, but it's something that, you know, at the administrative level, and I realize so much gets dictated by the state too. They add, they do the same thing to our district. They add on and they don't take anything away.
Yeah.
So, they add a report, but they don't take away a report.
Right.
Uh, but when we can, just to be conscious of that for our employees, that every time we add something, gosh, do we have something somewhere we can take off?
Yeah.
And let them know, because, because it does. You, you, you start, you start teaching, you have these responsibilities, and 10 years later, you've got these responsibilities, and nothing went away.
Well, and I think, I think part of the other reason that they are stressed a little bit is because our staffing is less than it was. But it's still similar to what everyone else has in the state.
It hasn't become the normal yet. Never mind, one part.
But it is the state norm. They're just at the norm level. Like, they're not, there's, there's, you know, a couple areas that are higher than others, but they're not out of the ordinary. But to them, it feels different, you know? It feels like there's less support. And, you know, when kinders, kinders come in at the beginning of the year, and, and they have to settle. They have to assimilate. It takes them a while. Like, I was in kindergarten classes the other day, and they're just all doing their work, and they're all perfectly like, just following directions. So, like, I mean, it takes them a while to assimilate to all those things that they're asked to do. And so, I think, you know, their, their struggle is real. And I think in the past, we threw money or people at it.
Yeah.
Or people with, that cost money. And you can't, you have to right-size, your staffing has to be right-sized for your student population, because your revenue is based on what you take in, based on your student population. Your ADMW is based on how many students you have. We have 3,640 students right now. And so, you know, when we have less students, we have to have less staffing. And although I, I will say that student needs are higher than they've ever been in our history, and ODE is going to have to at some point recognize that they need to fund high-cost disability fully. They need to help us with students that need alternate placements, like we, you know. There's a lot of things that they could do to help us that we're not seeing, but we are very vocal about it right now. And so, we are writing letters, and we are talking to them about all these things. And, which is part of being a visionary district leader, is to go in and say, hey, this isn't right. Like, I just wrote a letter on Tom's behalf because of the accounting change they're talking about. They're talking about taking our accounting code from 20 digits to 39.
By July 1, and no one's, and then everyone's hearing about this for the first time, all the school districts.
And we're like, uh-uh.
Wow.
Like, that, that shouldn't, that is not, that's not something that should happen in a six-month time period. I mean, go slow to go fast. Like, make sure you do it right and implement it correctly. Do a pilot, take some feedback. Those things are really important when you're trying to implement something in the whole state. And we, we're, we're just pushing back. So, I think, I mean, I think you have, we have to keep doing that when we see injustice or issues within the system, because like, we're here to educate kids. It's about what's best for kids. And having lower staffing levels is not what's best for kids. So, figure the budget out, because like, we have to figure our budget out. So, they're gonna have to do that as well.
Yep. I think there's one more, and I gotta let this one go. But there's, there's other things I think we could do, like, for instance, discipline policies. Like, if we know that there are certain classrooms or kids that are being disruptive but are never being addressed, cause I hear this quite a bit, like that, we do have policy on that. Like, we made a significant change at the high school this year by doing two things. Well, we got lucky with the state law on cell phones. But we also have staff that have been changed. We've had attendance focus. That's made a significant improvement. We've been holding kids accountable for being tardy and late. I'm hearing positive things. So, like, another thing is like, the teachers are feeling overwhelmed. I mean, there is a possibility, like, okay, well, we can step up our discipline stuff. And then also, the other thing is, most of this is a culmination of like, parents and society not taking responsibility at home and putting that on the teachers' plates too, you know? So...
Well, we have, I mean, we have some ideas to further support those, you know, those hotspots or whatever you wanna call them. I mean, I think that beyond discipline, I think you're trying to support the student as a whole learner. So, like, what do they need to be successful in the classroom? And you need to make your environment such that it supports that. So, like, having social and emotional learning instruction for kids. Like, how do you start the day? Like, are there consistent things we can do in the district to enhance that and make it better? Are there things we can share? We're already working on, Erin Scott's working on a peer project with one of her colleagues about like, what, how do we educate people about what kindergarten kids need to know when they come in our building? So, like, talking about the kindergarten assessment, talking about what skills do they need to have when they come in? Because I think, you know, if my student didn't have those skills right off the bat, I might hold them a year, you know, and, and work with them some more before they come in. Because I think that, you know, helping, helping parents understand what, what we're trying to do inside the school system, like, talking about early literacy, like, what they can do at home to help their kids get a head start in reading. I mean, there's tons of things you can do. Like, just talking to your student at home is really important in building their oral language and their academic language inside the building. Like, those things are directly related. The first skill you need to have for reading is oral language at home. It doesn't even, it happens before they even get into our building. So, how do we teach people about that? How do we give them the skills to teach some of those early literacy things at home? Like, there are things we can do that will help kids come in and have a, have an easier start. Can we start kindergarten two weeks early and put them all in a half a day? Because if we start early, and we have enough minutes, and we have enough days, they can go on Kinder Jump Start for a month. It wouldn't matter. Like, I mean, that would be legal, because it's extra time. It's not, you know, and it's part of summer instruction. So, can we do that for the whole kindergarten? We did it this year for like 30 kids, but can we do it for the whole kindergarten? I mean, there are things we can do to help our teachers.
Yeah. Awesome. Thanks, Kim.
Sound good to hear.
Yeah, I don't know if I have much else on here. Oh, I did have a few details about the economic forecast. So, you know, the state has a deficit of 373 million, and I sent you guys an email about this.
Right.
State agencies were asked to create budgets that were 2% to 5% less. We were advised to, to look at reductions from 1% to 3%. We haven't done that yet, but we will. Just in preparation. None of this is, I mean, we have, we still know nothing, really. I know. November 19th, that's the day. That's the day the state economic forecast comes out, the next one.
You promised, right? They're not gonna move the line further, right?
Yeah, I promised, because the legislature's in short session between the 17th and the 19th, so it actually will happen on that day, I'm pretty sure. And so, the state has $4 billion of reserves, but accessing those is kind of a process. It requires legislative approval, and it requires some economic factors that we be kind of headed towards a recession. But we were one of the 22 states that was listed as heading towards a recession. We shall see. You wanna add anything to that, Tom? Did I miss anything?
And if they send me a kicker check next year, I'm gonna take it. It's so wide.
They are still talking about sending a kicker check. I heard Daniel said that. They are still.
On one side of the probability curve, we're, we're fine. On the other side, it's devastating.
Yeah, depends on which number you plug in.
I can't wait to get out of that space and to think where things are known. That's what we're just waiting for. It's not a fun place to be right now.
No, we're just kinda hovering and waiting. So, but you'll be the first to know. And that's the end of my superintendent report. Any other questions you have?
Okay.
And if you wanna give me any feedback on my goals, feel free to send me an email.
Okay. And then the Division 22 standards?
Yeah, I went over that. We're compliant.
I was gonna say, you covered that, what you wanted to do.
Yeah, you have the report. We're compliant in all areas except 912 health, which we have an extension.
Okay, I thought so, but since it was a separate item. Okay, policy second reads. Did anyone have anything that came to mind or any questions concerning any of these policies that are on second reads? It's kind of a speak now or hold your peace, cause they'll be on consent agenda for third reads.
Again, I appreciate the work of everybody.
Anything?
That works on those.
Yeah, it did work. Really good.
Well...